And I see Susanna coming on. Great. Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Due to the COVID-19 health emergency, and in order for the Board of Education to conduct its business, this board meeting is being held via video conference and streamed live on YouTube and the website at www ebnet.org. In addition, members of the public may provide comment at this meeting through Zoom by entering the URL, meeting ID, and password you see before you on the screen. Upon joining the meeting, your participation will be muted to ensure that there is no disruption to the business being conducted by the Board of Education. Those of you who are viewing at home, I'm just going to ask that everybody please mute. That we have a slight echo in the background. Thank you very much. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Corangelo. Mrs. Chu.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Mrs. Gwass.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Lex.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Becker.
Here, we have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published at the Board of Education office. Written notices also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive sessions, are videotaped for later broadcast. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. Good evening, and thank you for joining us tonight. We will start off with the superintendent's report. Dr. Valeski.
Thank you, President Becker, and good evening, everyone. Join the Hammershold Middle School Drama Club in their production of The Wizard of Oz, adapted by John Jory. This tale takes us to a bizarre new world that shows flashes of the familiar as we follow a young girl named Dorothy longing for a way back home. Tickets are available at hmsnj/booktix, that's B-O-O-K-T-I-X, dot com for the livestream production of The Wizard of Oz on Wednesday, March 10th, and Thursday, March 11th, both at 7:00 PM. Children who will be five years of age or before October 31st, 2021, are eligible for the East Brunswick Public School Full Day Kindergarten Program for the 2021-2022 school year. Please visit ebnet.org/register to schedule your virtual appointment. All required forms and additional information can be found on the website. To assist us in planning for the upcoming school year, please register by April 30th, 2021. Students will be invited to participate in an informal screening process in the summer. Just a reminder for everyone, schools will be closed for spring break starting Monday, March 29th through Friday, April 2nd. This is also information that's very important for our staff and our community as spring break approaches. If you travel overnight to any U.S. state or territory beyond the immediate region, and immediate region is defined as the state of New York, the state of Pennsylvania, the state of Delaware, and the state of Connecticut, you will be required to quarantine from school for 10 calendar days after your return. Evidence of a negative COVID test, proof of a vaccine, or proof of a positive COVID test result and recovery within the last 90 days cannot be accepted as a substitute for the mandatory 10-day quarantine. For our staff, if you plan to travel, you must contact Human Resources in advance of your departure with dates, destination, and travel documents. Human Resources will advise those staff who have voluntarily elected to travel over spring break. Compliance with a 10-day calendar quarantine is mandatory to prevent the spread of COVID-19 in East Brunswick Public Schools. If you travel to any state outside of New Jersey and return the same day with no overnight stay, you do not need to quarantine if you are symptom-free. Again, that's if you don't travel overnight, you do not need to quarantine as long as you remain symptom-free. And for our students, students who elect to travel under the aforementioned conditions will be required to participate virtually and cannot come into their school building before they fulfill the mandatory 10-day required quarantine. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Valeski. So first up on this evening's agenda, we have several budget presentations. Bernie?
Yes, good evening, everyone. We are continuing our budget presentations, and the first up this evening is Facilities Management. We have Mr. Gerald Skek, the Director of Facilities Management, to review his area's budget.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I'm pleased to present the Facilities Management Department's budget for the 2021-2022 school year. Slide, please. As you know, the Facilities Management Department is comprised of three sections: maintenance, custodial, and grounds. Slide, please. For the maintenance section, the budget supports maintenance and repairs in the licensed trades such as electrical, heating and air conditioning, and plumbing, as well as the general maintenance trades such as general construction and painting. Slide, please. The budget also supports acquiring professional environmental services to ensure the district maintains compliance with federal, state, and local law programs. For the custodial section, the budget supports daily cleaning, sanitation, and disinfecting operations to provide a healthy work and learning environment for district employees, students, and the community. Slide, please. And finally, the grounds section, the budget supports grounds maintenance tasks and services to maintain athletic fields, playgrounds, natural and synthetic turf fields, courtyards, as well as paved and hard surfaces. Slide, please. The following pie chart provides a nice breakdown of how financial resources are dispersed in several operational categories. To provide some perspective, let's briefly discuss some of the tasks associated with each of these items or in each of these areas. The Building and System Maintenance and Repair Section comprises 16% of the allocated budget and enables technicians to maintain domestic hot water heater systems, interior and exterior light fixtures, intercom systems within our schools, doors and lock mechanisms, and also replace air filters in HVAC systems four times a year. The custodial section of the pie chart makes up 65% of the department's budget, and most of these costs ensure each building has enough manpower to properly clean, sanitize, and disinfect facilities on a daily basis. Finally, the care and upkeep of the grounds section comprises 16% of the department's budget. The largest allocations for this portion of the budget go towards maintaining exteriors of properties and to include general purpose, or which include general purpose, and athletic fields. While the primary focus of the department is maintenance and repair, the department is heavily involved in identifying and planning capital improvement projects. That said, the next two slides are to inform the board and the community of major infrastructure items or components that need significant funding to maintain but are not funded. Slide. This slide highlights eight of 13 facilities that require significant investment to repair or replace their roofing infrastructure. While the high school's roof is the largest concerns concern, due to the significant amount of funding required, a larger discussion to determine the future disposition of that building needs to be had. Slide, please. And the final slide highlights major repairs needed to improve pavement and hard surfacing areas at each district property. Again, at 34%, the high school requires the most work. But after making a monumental investment to replace the roof and repair pavement and other hard surfaces, the question the board must answer is, is the current infrastructure and design capable of supporting the educational needs of the 21st century student? So with that, that concludes the presentation for Facilities Management, and I'll now attempt to answer any questions that you might have.
Bernie, can you put us back on gallery view, please?
Certainly.
Thank you. Okay, anybody have any questions? For Jerry. Lu, Liwu?
Hey, Garrett, thank you very much for your good presentation.
You're welcome, sir.
So I realized that the high school roof and pavement cost quite good money.
Yes.
Do you have any idea how much was spent last year and two years ago for your comparison?
Would that be for roof repairs, Liwu? Or in conjunction of all repairs associated with the high school?
In conjunction for entire high school.
Oh, no, I don't have that number present with me at this time.
Okay.
But we can research that and find out for you.
Yeah, that number will help us to decide and how much money we're pumped in every year to keep the facility in usable condition. Thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, Jerry, again, great presentation. Hammershold, it looked like had some significant needs on the roof and the paving and curving. One of our newer buildings, I would say, how do those two things match up?
Matchup is matchup as far as how, Mr. Winston?
It, like I said, Hammershold is one of our newer buildings. It looked like there was a lot of money needed for roof repairs and paving and curving than some of the older buildings. So how, I think it was 13 years ago that Hammershold was built, is that correct?
Yep, so perhaps I can jump in on this if you don't mind.
Sure, thanks.
So, yes, in terms of the roof, the roof on that building is definitely going to need to be replaced in the not-too-distant future. That roof is a 15-year roof. So it's not a hot roof as we've done on our other buildings as we've been replacing them. The hot roofs have 30-year warranties. Hammershold is what's called an EPDM roof.
Correct.
Correct. So as such, they have a shorter timeframe, a shorter lifespan. So as a matter of fact, it's one of the things that Mr. Skek and I have been talking about, the need to plan for Hammershold's roof replacement. It's something we're definitely going to have to do. And then in terms of the paving, while, you know, while the facility is not that old, when we have blacktop surfaces, they do need to be maintained. And so what has to happen is they need occasional resealing. Sometimes they need to be re-ground so that an initial surface is taken down off the top and then resurfaced. So there's constant work that's necessary on all paved areas, all blacktop areas. They don't last in perpetuity, and when they're not when they're not regularly sealed and resurfaced, it has a drastic impact upon their longevity. So it's just, it's what I call pride of ownership. When you have properties and improvements on them, you have to constantly make sure that you're keeping on top of it to maintain the investment. Otherwise, the investment that's put into it can be diminished if they're not maintained in accordance with what the standards are. I hope that helps.
Yeah, and definitely the roof thing, being a 15-year roof as opposed to, I think, Churchill, where we were talking much longer, so thank you very much.
Mr. Juliana, just a point of clarification. So the EB, for the public, EPDM roofs are cheaper to install than the other roofs, correct?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are, and also have a shorter lifespan. So, you know, it's, you get what you pay for.
Thank you.
Yes.
Actually, Jerry, I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Very, very good report, very well researched. Thank you so much. We talked about in other areas, other budget managers, about a replacement cycle that they work out. For instance, in the area of athletics, there's a rotation cycle for equipment and especially uniforms where they're replaced per this spreadsheet rotation, if you will. Every year, there's a number of replacements on the facilities and maintenance grounds budget in terms of vehicles or major equipments. And are we, do you also go by a specific rotation? Or is it more driven by need and wear and tear?
I would say, I would say originally, it's been driven by need and wear and tear. However, the department has been striving to identify areas. You know, Mr. Juliana talks about establishing a balance, not a balanced budget, but a level or a flat budget, one that doesn't have peaks and valleys and everything. It makes it very hard to plan. So we've been working with different administrators in every area to try to identify things that need to be replaced so that we can establish some type of cycle. You know, we will research the component, you know, we'll determine what should be the useful life of that equipment, you know, make sure that it has the proper maintenance and repair on a periodic basis. And then at the end of that lifecycle, hopefully before that budget year, make a request to replace that equipment so that, so that things can be anticipated and not just a knee-jerk reaction to say that we, you know, we have to buy something right now that affects, you know, the curriculum or student development or something like that. So we've been, we've been trying very hard, you know, to identify those. Every year, it's a few more items, and it's, the budget right now is pretty comprehensive, as you've seen in the report, and we're striving to get better.
I'd like to just jump in also on that because, you know, when we're talking about those last two slides where we have roofs and paving, we've been, we've been taking off the roofs, one, you know, one at a time. The last several years, we've managed to re-roof. Oh, let me see, we did Warrenstorfer, we did Frost. We just have come to completion on the entire Churchill Junior High School roof. And I'm missing any, Jerry, on that?
Lawrence Brook.
Oh, Lawrence Brook, that's right. We just did Lawrence Brook this past summer. So we've been, we've been tackling them about one a year or so, one every two years roughly. But it's a costly endeavor, and we tried to do that through our revolving debt. We don't have enough debt expiring to be able to undertake another roof at this time. So the items that are listed under the roofing aspect will need to wait another year or so. In terms of the paving aspect, however, we've really not been able to set aside funds to do that. That will need its own, its own debt issuance, and our debt issuances are typically of a short term, of five years or less. So we've been doing things on a rotation. When one debt expires, we reissue and do some additional work. We're in a much better place than where we used to be. Many years ago, we did not have any kind of a plan in place, and we were, you know, basically patching things quite a bit. But we're doing a lot more capital improvement to really maintain the buildings in a much better way, and the board's been really super about that in allowing us to establish this revolving debt. And Jerry mentioned in terms of the peaks and valleys, what we've tried to do is maintain a level debt structure so that we're not having to deal with those amounts undulating from year to year. We can, we can pretty much plan a year, two, three in advance when it comes to that.
Thank you, Bernie. Yeah, I'm sorry if I didn't articulate that clearly. I, my referral to a rotation was more about pieces of equipment, vehicles, the things we'll see, not necessarily something like a roof, although I did appreciate your explanation, and certainly, it's all important information. And Jerry, to your point about doing things in somewhat of a proactive manner, it's always going to be more efficient and more fiscally efficient rather than, as you put it, the knee-jerk reaction, which is great that we're looking at it that way. Thank you. Jeff? Jeff Benliwu?
Hi, Bernie. Nice to see you, and thank you for the presentation.
Jeff, you're breaking up.
A couple of questions, I have two questions for you. All right, one second. Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Yes, that's a lot better. That's a lot better.
All right, well, you won't be able to see me speaking, but trust me, I am. With, I have two questions for you. The first one, and a lot in what Bernie was just talking about, I'm talking about the replacement and specifically surrounding the paving. Let's just use the high school for an example, and I know there are some maintenance things I have to do in my driveway, and I would imagine they're not so dissimilar to what has to be done on an asphalt parking lot. What has been the resealing schedule over the years? How often has that lot been proactively maintained? You're smiling, and I could see you. So, you know, can, give me some insight on that, and then I have a follow-up question.
You know, I can, I can tell you, I'm smiling because, you know, as Mr. Juliana said, there's a lot of discussion that happens around, in the background of what has not been taking place and what we've been striving to get towards. I can tell you to be honest, you know, the high school property, as well as all of our properties have not, the pavement surfaces have not been seal-coated, have not been crack-sealed in, on a regular basis. And that's because, you know, there's always a balance in priorities. You know, do we, do we spend, and I'll just, do we spend X number amount resealing the pavement even though that needs to be done? Or do we buy the curriculum department books for, to, you know, to put this new program in place? So it's always, it's always, you know, a battle to try to prioritize these things, and that's exactly, the slide that you saw, the board commissioned architects to evaluate all the properties and to prioritize them by repair and then, and then give us a dollar amount of what that would take. But as Mr. Juliana had stated, we just have not been able to get there to be able to find the resources to, to start that process. And that report now, that slide, is probably a couple of years old now. You know, but we just haven't had the opportunity to pull the trigger on a lot of these maintenance type of activities.
Right, so if I'm hearing correctly, we really haven't been maintaining it, which accelerates the decay and puts us in the position we're in today.
Sorry, breaking up again.
A slightly different interpretation of what you said, but I appreciate that.
Jeff, you're
Yeah, I can hear this better.
Yeah, it is. You are, you are correct in that. We have not had the resources to be able to maintain the asphalt surfaces as they should be. That's been forever. And I do want to make, and it doesn't make it right. It absolutely is not right. But we're dealing with limited resources and trying to figure out how to, how to bridge that gap. One thing I want to clarify, though, that, that we One thing I want to clarify, though, that, that we never, we don't, we don't pit the curricular area against facilities, okay?
That example, sorry.
That doesn't, that doesn't happen. We, we really try to deal with those areas individually because they're both important and they both have needs, and we want to keep both moving forward. So I think that's important to note. But, you know, it's a matter of, you know, establishing an initial funds to be able to do that and have that dedicated toward the paving purposes, and we haven't gotten there.
I appreciate that, and so to date, that really hasn't been established, and I understand that. The follow-up question is really resonating off of the last thing that you said, Jerry, in your presentation. And that's something that will probably stay with me for the rest of the night. You had said that are schools equipped to handle 21st century students and learning? And that's a question I ask myself constantly in all aspects, including in your area. So with that said, and you said that you've spoken to experts such as architects and so on, and you, and those two slides you hung up there in very bold print on top did state that these are unfunded areas of need totaling of about $18 million, so between the two slides. So with that said, let me ask you, are facilities up to par to handling 21st century education based on what you see? And, and as a part of that, where's, where's our failure? Where is the massive failure in the most vulnerable area in this town that we need to be overly concerned about at this time?
That, that's, that's a tough one, and I don't, I'm not really clear about what you mean by the massive failure, unfortunately, so.
Facility, a facility, which facility, which roof will fail miserably if not addressed quickly? Talking about facilities, now you had said that you have $18 million worth of need, and I honed in on the roofs, because I know if the roofs go, that definitely does not make a 21st century learning experience. And that's been evident already in some of the classrooms. So that said, my question is, from what you've gotten back from the experts, which of the buildings should we be most concerned about failure?
So let, let me jump in on that, and Jerry, feel free to piggyback as well. I would say that the, and I'm going, you need to hear everything I'm going to say about this. I'm going to say that the, the high school roof is the one that would probably rise to the surface. But it's not in such a shape that we're talking about a roof that is going to completely fail. So I think that's important. We, Jerry's team and his, through his resources and his budget, they are constantly addressing problem areas and maintaining it so that we do have a watertight roof. But there will come a point where that's not going to be sustainable. We're not there at this point, but we're going to be there. We will be there. So, you know, this is where important decisions have to be made in terms of what we're going to do facility-wise. We have been very fortunate that none of our roofs have ever gotten to that point where they are in such failure that we would not be able to educate our kids and safely keep them in the buildings. We've had certain problem areas. I know, I can tell you, at Churchill, there were numerous problem areas in that facility. And that was a big nut to have to undertake in terms of funding a roof replacement. We got there. We did it. It's in great shape now. We won't have to think about that roof for another 30 years. Will there need to be repairs and patching from time to time? Absolutely. That happens. It's the nature of the business, and it goes to what I said before. It's pride of ownership. When you own a building, you own all the issues that come with it, whether you like them or not. So that's what I have to say in terms of, you know, the, the failure. We don't have a failure, but we do have issues that we absolutely are going to need to address in the not-too-distant future.
Mr. Juliana, the high school is probably our, in terms of age, it has the oldest components of all of our facilities currently, right?
Absolutely, and, and, you know, if I can, I just want to expand for a moment because, you know, we've, we've talked a lot about the roof. But when we look at the high school, I think it's been a hodgepodge. That building is a massive building, and it has been a hodgepodge over the years from the time that it was initially constructed back around 1960. So, you know, it's, it was originally a California-style campus, individual buildings. Then the buildings were tied together and joined, and we added more, more parts and more components. And, and, you know, that's an evolution of a building in many, in many ways. But, you know, we still have the same rough infrastructure. The windows are the same. The, the electrical systems are the same. The, the size of the rooms are the same. We're talking about a building, for the most part, where the rooms are more or less based on what a 1960s education would be, which is not a 21st century facility. So lots of things to do at the high school.
Well, Mr. Winston, you and Mr. Sizmar actually went to that school when it was a California-style building, right?
Yes, it was great. Yes, it was phenomenal. Yes, it was. Yep.
Okay, Liwu, I believe you had a question?
Yes, I do. So Bernie, so I know you are really good at refinancing. So I have a question for you, but you don't have to answer me now. If the financial market is not in our favor, we just cannot get some resource through the bound refinancing. Can we still find the resource to do the roof, once a, at least one roof a year, keep the other roofs from leaking? So what should we think about this one? I believe the finance market is in our favor now, but I don't know. But who, nobody know what will be in future.
Well, this is where, this is where, you know, I also give the township a great deal of credit because they've been very cooperative with the board and with the school district in terms of being our, our financial branch, if you will. We have entered into agreements pretty much every year where the township exercises its borrowing power on our behalf, and we pay the township. The township doesn't incur the cost. The, the district pays for the cost of issuance on the loans and the repayment and so forth. And the township has enjoyed very, very, very favorable rates through their borrowing power and through the rating that the township has. So we'll continue to do that. We've, we've followed this process for many, many years, and we'll continue to do that. It is beneficial to, to both the township, the board, and to the community as a whole, because ultimately, it saves money.
Thank you. Good luck.
Is there anybody else who had any questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much, Jerry, again. Greatly appreciate the work and all the hard work of your entire team.
Thank you. We appreciate the board's support.
Okay, Bernie, what's up next?
Next, we have Transportation Department, and we have Joyce Forsberg, manager of transportation, to talk about her area's budget.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank the Board of Education for helping to support the Transportation Department and everything that you do do for us. Start off my budget presentation, I'd like to explain a little bit about transportation, that we provide a safe, high-quality transportation for students of the community by following the federal, state, local laws, as well as the Board of Education's policies and procedures. We greet the students every morning, going to provide them with a good experience so that they can have a positive attitude for learning for the rest of the day. This also is translated in the afternoon when we bring them home. We try to keep upbeat and give them a welcoming so they understand that, you know, their day is good, our day is good. We also, this also helps to provide the parents with a confidence in their bus drivers, knowing that the bus driver welcomes their students, that they care about their safety and feel safe that we will transport their students to and from school safely. Next slide, please. Okay, I'm just going to go over a little bit on this pie chart regarding how our transportation is, basically how we do our transportation, okay? 51% of our students that are transported are students that we call regular transportation needs, which are students who reside remotely from the school that they attend and their residence. 39% of our students that we transport are due to hazardous conditions, which, for example, we don't allow students to cross Route 18 from the Old Bridge Turnpike side to go to Irwin Elementary. Okay, if there was a need for that, or to the high school, for that matter. It's actually the high school Hammershold and Churchill, where the hazardous routes are more of a need. And the third largest portion that we transport are special needs students, which is about 6% of the student population. Next slide, please. As you can see, this is a pie chart of how we try to allocate the transportation budget. You will notice that transporting the students is the largest allocation, between 60% of it going for the special needs students because of the equipment or personnel that they may need due to their IEPs. The next largest portion would be the students that live remotely from the school. And then we have the charter and the hazardous routing. That falls into those categories at a smaller percentage. The bus maintenance and repairs that we handle for the fleets takes about 10% of our budget. For the bus alone, we spend 5% of the budget maintaining and making repairs to help to maintain a safe vehicle on the road to get students to and from school, preventing breakdowns. At this time, this year, I also am handling the fleet maintenance on the maintenance and grounds vehicles, which we have included in our schedule of regular maintenance on the vehicles and any repairs that are needed due to breakdowns. Basically, the fuel for our budget is a small percentage too, because of the fact that, you know, we're basically all in district, in town. So it's allocated for a small percentage because we don't run all over and go unnecessarily driving out of the district. Let's see, the cost that you don't see here in my transportation budget would be any staff or benefits, the staff salaries or the benefits, because I don't manage that within my budget. That is managed elsewhere. So pretty much, that explains transportation. Does anybody have any questions?
I'll wait till we're up in the gallery view. Okay, does any board member have any questions for Joyce? Mark?
Just a comment, if I may. I've seen up close the transportation working with all the moving pieces and stuff. Joyce and your crew, I just wanted to give you thanks for keeping the kids safe because there's so many moving parts on a daily basis. I don't know how you do it sometimes, but just a comment of thank you.
Thank you. Well said, Mark.
Thank you, Bernie.
Else have any questions for Joyce? The board members who I can't see, Heather, Lori, if you have any questions, text or shout it out or. Okay, Joyce, it was an excellent report, and as Mark said, what you were doing can never be trivialized. The transportation of our students, the safety factor is one of our greatest responsibilities. And I liked Mark's use of the word, the phrase "moving parts" because, no pun intended, but the wheels on the bus are just part of the story here. And I, I don't, I sometimes think that people need to see, not that we're going to have guided tours, don't get nervous, but your staff, at some point in the future, when everyone is back in the building, the software that's involved in running the business of transporting the amount of students we do. It's a business within itself, just all the coordinating and scheduling. And considering all the factors of we have transportation to the charter school, transportation to out-of-district placements, to non-public schools. You do a fantastic job, you and your staff, really to be commended.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else before we ask for the next budget manager's presentation? Okay, thank you so much again, Joyce.
Thank you.
Okay, Bernie, with community programs is next?
Yes, so I, I will ask Amri Gilbert, manager of community programs, to speak about her area's budget.
Okay, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. I'm very excited to present my second budget in this position. So I want to share with you some changes, some improvements in our programs. So let me start by saying that the community programs budget, we prepared it, of course, with the thought that we're back in-person learning in September at full capacity. So the numbers you're looking at are where we were at in February of 2020, before we had to shut down. And that is a really good estimate of where we typically are throughout the school year. So that's what you're looking at here for each of our programs. You know, you see here, we're about 1,200 students in after-school, over 1,000 early morning, about 180 in Early Learning Academy, and then our enrichment programs are various. So what I'd like to do, if we can, is go on to the next slide and kind of go through briefly each of the programs. And you're looking at our estimated revenue here. Our after-care program is always our largest kind of piece of the pie, if you will. So at usual capacity, as we mentioned, we're about 1,200 students, 785 attending every day, and the rest are typically our occasional youth students. We're located at all eight elementary schools, as well as in Hammershold. Our typical hours are right from dismissal through to 6:00 p.m. Parents can pick up any time in between, but we do have our doors open until 6:00 p.m. A typical afternoon in after-care, we have homework time with certified teachers to assist in their daily work. Every student gets a snack and a drink, and there's lots of playtime. After being in school all day long, these kids need a break, and they need to blow off some steam. So we definitely make sure their homework's done. We definitely make sure we give them a snack and a drink. But then it's all about play. It's organized games, sports, crafts, board games, various other fun activities. We want to give our students a voice to choose what they want to do. Not every student wants to play a sport. Not every student likes to do a craft. We make sure there's multiple activities so they have a great time. The biggest compliment we get is when a parent comes and picks up their child. They say, "Not yet, Mom. Can I stay longer?" It's tremendous, and that's what we strive for. Moving to the next piece of the pie, our Early Learning Academy preschool. I am so excited to say that in September, we'll be entering our 10th year of the Early Learning Academy preschool. We are going to be again located at Hammershold Middle School. We have our own portion of the building with our own entrance and exit, as well as security. We typically have, as we mentioned in the previous slide, about 180 students, and that is our maximum capacity. We have eight classrooms. In our larger classrooms, we usually have 20 to 24 students. We have a couple of small classrooms that were previously small group instruction, so we limit there to about 11 students. With regards to curriculum, about back in 2017, we purchased and implemented the creative curriculum. So we were very excited about that. It's basically learning through play, which is ideal for. It's basically learning through play, which is ideal for early childhood education. Another piece of that that we started was foundations. Foundations has extensive program materials that we use. It's to give structured reading and spelling using engaging multisensory techniques. This is something that's also used in kindergarten, so these kids move on from, with such a transparent transition from preschool into kindergarten. So, you know, it's such a great variety of curriculum that we use that these kids really do so well in our program. We provide half-day morning, half-day afternoon, and full-day options. In addition, we offer early morning and aftercare, so some of our students are with us from 6:50 in the morning until 6 o'clock at night. It's a long day, but we love having the little ones and we love giving parents those options. Parents can order hot lunch that gets delivered right to the classroom. And as well as those students that are in our early morning program, they can order hot breakfast that also gets delivered right to the classroom for them. Next, I'll move on to our early morning program, also known as Morning Start in our Hammershold School. We typically have a little bit over 1,000 students in our early morning program, 650 of which extend, attend every day. And otherwise, it's our occasional youth students. Again, we're located at all eight elementary schools, as well as Hammershold. We start at 7:00 AM until school begins in the elementary schools, and we start at 6:50 AM at Hammershold. In the morning program, our focus is on fun in the morning. You know, if a child definitely didn't finish their homework, we of course give them the opportunity. They, the child nutrition department is nice enough, they opened their breakfast line a little early, so our early morning students can enjoy breakfast. But it's all about fun. We want to focus on giving them, just like Joyce had stated in transportation on the buses, we want to start them off with a positive, fun start to their day, so they walk into their classrooms ready to learn. The other programs, the smallest piece that you're looking at here, that usually includes our enrichment programs. Now, you know, if we have to say, if we, you know, want to say there was a silver lining to all of this, we really branched out and did a number of virtual programs. We weren't sure how it would be received because these students are virtual all day long, or many of them are. But that being said, we had such success and we were able to reach students that previously couldn't be in our programs. You know, they have to take the bus home, the parents are working, they don't have a ride to stay after school in our enrichment programs. This gave all students in our district the opportunity to participate. So we plan next year on not only offering it to our in-school students, but continue to offer virtual programming as well. That being said, we not only expanded our programming, but the ages we're offering programs to. Besides our traditional programs, we always have coding and STEM and SAT prep, robotics and sports. We expanded to include world languages for our elementary students, so they get a flavor for what the language was, will be in their curriculum later on. And our own, I'm very happy to say, we have our own district teachers teaching this, so they're so familiar with the curriculum. Chess, I think Queen's Gambit may have kind of trickled down to our students. We never expected to have over 65 children participate, so we're going to offer another round in the spring. We were so excited about that. We branched into piano lessons, we sold out four classes. Cooking, we expanded to as young as our elementary, our kindergarten students. We just offered songwriting and harmonizing for our sixth to 12th grade students. We even started to dabble back with our adults offering enrichment program. We just had the French experience, learning language and culture. We're offering now adult cooking classes, as well as adult Italian. So we've really taken it to the next level and we're excited to offer all of this programming and more for the upcoming school year. Quickly, I wanted to mention, there's a big part of community programs that you don't see here, it's not part of the budget. And that is our adult school. We offer English as a second language, citizenship, as well as high school equivalency. All of these classes are free for all adults in East Brunswick, as well as surrounding towns. It's funded by a Title II grant from the New Jersey Department of Labor, and we typically service 185 students. We get rated every year based on enrollment, and the state requires us to have a specific percentage of students, not only level up, but we have to maintain a certain number of students that they allocate us for the funds. It's all kind of relative to each other. Last year, prior to the pandemic shutting down, we were on target for the first time to level up a complete grade, which we're so proud of. Due to that good standing, the Department of Labor increased our funding for the 2021 school year, allowing us to increase to 18 additional students from where we were, up to 203. In the consortium that is led by New Brunswick, as an average in the consortium, which has multiple school districts, everyone's only about forty percent of their target and required numbers. Again, I'm very proud to say in our program, we've just reached over eighty percent of our target. On a recent call with the Department of Labor and our consortium, due to the success that we've had in our program, they've said that next year they'll be reallocating additional funds to us to allow additional students. So just a shout out to our amazing teachers and support staff. Half of our teachers are East Brunswick teachers that, after a long day in school, are so dedicated to our adults at night. So thank you for indulging me in that piece, even though it's not part of the budget, but I thought it was very important to share with everybody. If we can go to the next slide. Very quickly, our expense budget, you know, as always expected, salaries and benefits are the largest part of what we do. Everything works in ratios. As our enrollment increases, we need to have more staff. So this is all very usual and proportionate to what we do. That being said, the fees that we've recommended for the 2021 to 2022 school year are attached to the packet. And that concludes my presentation, unless there are questions.
Okay. Anybody, that was a terrific presentation, Amory.
Thank you so much.
So comprehensive. Anybody have any questions for Amory? So I see Susannah, then Barbara, then LeWu. Okay, Susannah.
Hi, thank you, Henry, and we heard about this in the finance committee earlier this week as well. And it occurred to me, when you talked about the success of the adult education program and the fact that it's free to the students and it is free to the district because it's covered by federal grant. And just what amazing service it is to have, you know, to have this available to our community and, you know, just want to emphasize that, like, how do we get the word out to make sure that our community knows about it? To be able to go back and get your GED or, you know, ESL or whatever it is that, you know, that you're looking for, that this is free of charge and it's available right in your community, and it doesn't cost our taxpayers anything.
Yeah, it's an amazing program. We do a press release every year. We definitely, I do blackboards out to our entire district, so this way faculty, staff, parents, if they know people, relatives, neighbors, we get the word out and there is always so much interest. And again, being in the virtual piece, I think it's allowed students that previously had childcare issues as adults, they're able to do it. Their children are running around behind them and that's okay. So again, where I was speaking earlier about the enrichment programs, next year we're planning again to have a virtual piece, almost like a hybrid type program where we can offer to students to be in person, they can be fully virtual or a combination thereof, and we're hoping that that will even be able to reach additional students.
And that's another example of, you know, how, you know, despite the challenges of the pandemic, how we've learned and grown, right? So now the program can be offered in ways that can reach parents that could not otherwise come, parents with young children who want to go back and get their high school diploma, can now do that. That's just really great. So, you know, to the extent we have capacity, it should not go unused and we should really look for more ways to get the word out. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, Barbara, then LeWu.
Hi, it's more of a thank you or comment than a question. I just wanted to thank Amory and her entire team because they've pivoted so much, you know, in this, similar to what Susannah said, the silver lining of this is that there's opportunities that we may not have had before to reach out to folks that couldn't come or weren't able to come. And the variety of programming that she's expanding to the, for as young as kindergarten, then all the way up to the high school is an exciting opportunity for a lot of our kids. And even from the range of things that her, you know, area offers and her teachers and staff and so forth, anything from chess to cooking and languages and using our own teachers is wonderful as well, so thank you.
Thank you so much for saying that and for your support.
LeWu?
So, Amory, thank you very much. When I heard your presentation, I'm excited, I can sense your excitement. So I just cannot wait to send my voice to the programs. So part of my question already asked by Susannah. So my concern is all my, is how you spread out the word to to let people know you and your team are doing a great job, we have the capacity, we have the program, and so we can attract more students into the programs. So maybe you should do something at back-to-school night or parent university, or whatever, just let people know you are here and you're doing a great job and you're willing to help and you have the capacity to help.
Absolutely. Thank you. Great recommendation. We typically do come to back-to-school nights and things of that nature. We used to always give a community programs brochure. But to your point, we've never included the adult school with that as well, so great suggestion, and we'll continue to look for more ways.
Thank you.
And thank you so much as well for your words and your support. Thank you so much.
Any other board members, comments, questions? Jeff? Jeff?
Hi, yeah, Amory, just a real quick question. I just, I was looking at the schedule. When was the last time you did a fee increase?
So what we've been traditionally doing is a very small increase each year since I've started, just to cover the cost of the increase of salaries and benefits.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Anyone else? Seeing none again, Amory, thank you. And as everyone has been saying, you and your entire team, your entire staff are to be commended for a terrific job, whether it's the before-care program, the after-care program, the work you're doing with adults through grant programs. It's truly engaging our community and our district, and you and your entire staff are to be commended.
Thank you, and I truly appreciate everybody's, I know I said it before, but the support of the board has been tremendous, so thank you.
Okay, Bernie. That's a tough act to follow. What do you have for us?
We have such an exciting topic next, insurance. Gee, who put the order of these topics together?
It must have been Jeff.
So.
Getting Jeff.
Now, and before I proceed with this, I do want to express my thanks and appreciation to each of the individuals that preceded me here. You know, to Jerry and Joyce and Amory, they absolutely love their jobs. They love what they do for the district, they are passionate about what they do for the district, and it's certainly appreciated. Those are folks that, and areas that, you know, we can have a high degree of confidence in. Insurance, this is certainly not an exciting area, but it is one of the building blocks in terms of the budget. And important that the board and the community know where our resources go. So the first slide we're going to show provides a comparative of the various lines of insurance. Workers' compensation, multi-peril, which includes property and electronic data processing, general liability, automobile coverage. Then there's a school board legal liability, student accident insurance, supplemental indemnity on workers' comp, supplemental liability insurance. There's builder's risk, environmental liability, and then the fidelity bond. Of these packages, when we look at all the lines, with the exception of workers' compensation, these are preliminary estimates. It's, right now it's projected at approximately a 9.5% increase in the premium. That's not, that's not final at this point. We won't have a final for probably two, perhaps three months, because we are engaging in the process of securing an appropriate market through our broker, and this is an annual process that we go through. I do want to speak for a moment regarding workers' compensation, which is the first set of bars on the left. And that is a very substantial drop in the workers' compensation costs from $707,000 budget in the current year, to $451,000 budgeted for the next year. That is the result of a very substantial improvement in our claims experience. People being safer, incurring less injuries on the job and less time lost from work. So certainly a very significant improvement and a direct impact and significant impact upon the budget. Next, health benefits. So the first set of bars is for medical and prescription, and that, and medical and prescription, which is representative of a 3% projected increase in rates. The next set is for dental. Dental rates are not changing from the current year. And then the next set is for vision coverage, that also is remaining flat. So the composite rate is 2.8%, which is really an exceptional, exceptional rate compared to what I would say other school districts have experienced, and certainly much better than what we experienced last year. I believe last year our rate increase was at 8.7%, so this is very, very much improved. The last set of bars there shows employee contributions, and those are the legally required contributions pursuant to Chapter 78 and Chapter 40, and now Chapter 44. You'll see here that for employee contributions, it's actually going down. And I will say that as a result of recent legislation, where school districts were required to implement a new plan called the New Jersey Educators Health Plan, it also had its own set of employee contribution rates. That has had a direct impact upon employee contributions to the district. It was supposed to save money, it's actually not saving money on the whole. So we're seeing a reduction on employee contributions. We don't have a choice in that plan, it is mandated plan by law. So, you know, but this is currently what the outlook is overall for health benefits and employee contributions related to that. And that is it on insurance.
Any board members have any questions to Bernie about what he just presented, insurance? Okay, I don't see anyone. Thank you, Bernie.
So just a couple of follow-ups then with regard to, with regard to what's coming up after this. Quickly, March 18th, we will have the budget presentation and the board will be adopting a tentative budget. As a reminder, the tentative budget is just that, it is tentative, it's not final. And in the weeks that follow, the board will have opportunity to discuss and potentially make revisions as may be necessary. Public hearing on the budget will be held on May 7th. That will be the last point in time at which any changes to the budget may be made. And then the final budget adoption is slated for May 13th.
So Bernie, to, just to reiterate, the tentative board, the tentative budget adoption is part of the formal budget process as defined by the state. But it is certainly still a work in progress until we do the final adoption in May.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, great. So lots of finance committee meetings to look forward to. Okay. Next, we come to the good of the cause to the public. Next, we come to the good of the cause to the public. Members of the public may provide comments at this meeting through Zoom by entering the URL, meeting ID and password you will see before you on the screen. In order to be recognized, use the chat feature, select the Zoom meeting host, then enter and send your name to the host. You will be recognized to speak when your name is called, and individuals will be invited to speak in the order in which we have received your request. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment and educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. Participants will be limited to speak to three minutes each. And I wanted to remind the public that this is your time to come and speak to the board. It isn't a time to engage in dialogue with us. It's not a time for you to worry about what we're going to say. This is a time for you to come and speak. So if we are are quiet, it is because we are listening to you. And if there is an administrative response to you for a particular question, one will absolutely be provided by Dr. Waleski's office. So again, this is your time and we're here to listen. So Bernie, is there anyone wishing to address the board tonight?
There are no requests to speak.
Okay. Seeing none, I close the public portion. And we move on. First item is the Board of Education agenda. Can I please have a motion to combine items one through four?
So Jeff.
Moved by Jeff?
Second.
Second by Li Wu. Is there any discussion? Mark?
Yeah, last meeting we tabled policies one, one fifty two and one sixty five for for full board discussion, but I don't see them anywhere.
Bernie?
Yes, those, because they were tabled, they would not be part of these these resolutions that are currently before you. I believe that those policies, well, there was one that I believe was tabled and would not be coming back following a discussion. And then there was another of the ballot bylaws that is being remanded to the policy committee meeting or to the policy committee.
Which which one was voted to not come back? Because I I thought they were both tabled, just to have full board discussion.
They were both tabled, but the the one had to do with the order of of the call for vote. So I forget the number on that, Mark. I apologize. It was the recommended change was for seniority alphabetical order. And I don't believe that is coming back for further consideration. But the second bylaw, which is had various changes in terms of the form of the vote. It it addressed the voting for officers. And there was a question, I believe, that you had raised on that. So that poll, that bylaw is going back to the policy committee for discussion.
Okay, yeah, that's one fifty two. So one sixty five. When it's tabled for full board discussion, it can just be removed outside of a meeting and then it just disappears? I guess that's my question.
Yeah, I don't I don't. We can bring that back if there's a, you know, a discussion to be had, but I had heard that there really wasn't a desire to make a change on that.
That was the one, if you recall, that was the one where there was a recommendation to to do it kind of in seniority order and alphabetically. And if you look at Robert's Rules of Order, it says it's supposed to be done alphabetically with the chair going last. That's what Robert's Rule said. So if that's something that the that the board or the policy committee wants to revisit, the policy committee should then make that recommendation to the board. But the other one that that Mr. Sizmar had mentioned under the board bylaws, that goes back to the policy committee for review and consideration.
I I didn't think that there was any interest in changing the voting from alphabetical to seniority. Mark, did you?
I I guess my question would be, where did it come from then? Someone would have had to put it. Well, someone would have, let me finish. Someone would have had to put it through policy and put it on the agenda, which I think due diligence would have been to check to see if it's a violations of Robert's rules before it's brought before the full board. And then it just after we said we tabled to discuss it, it it just disappeared. So I guess that's my question. Why did it get to how did it get to an agenda and then disappear?
So let me let me address that, please, because Mr. Sizmar, and I think I had mentioned this at the prior meeting when that that one policy was brought up. I presented those those recommendations over to the policy committee because, one, on the voting order, there had been some question regarding new board members and their comfort with voting first in the order when they've had no experience on being on the board. And so that was put forth as a suggestion. It was discussed at policy committee, the policy committee, board members on policy committee found that to be favorable. And so then it made its way to the full board. Then, following the discussion, the very brief discussion that took place at the prior meeting, it was tabled. And my sense was that there really wasn't any interest in having that moved forward. And so a tabled item remains tabled with no further action necessary. That's pursuant to Robert's rules. The second, the second bylaw, which addressed the manner of voting for officers, that bylaw also was brought to the policy committee. I put that forth to the policy committee because there were recommended changes that came from Strauss Esme to further tighten how the the balloting should take place. And I believe those changes were a result of a legal case that had occurred. And so it it gave some clarifying language there. There was also some additional language that had been presented to policy. The policy committee had a discussion. There was a recommendation to make minor change to that and eliminate some of the language that had been there. That additional language was to have basically a bifurcated process where there was a segment of of voting, which would be a voice vote, voice roll call vote in cases where there was not a contested candidacy for an officer's position and a paper ballot for when there was a contested position candidacy. I believe it was Mr. Winston who suggested that we should do them all in paper ballot, and there was a consensus at policy to proceed in that manner. And that's what was presented to the board. So subsequently, at the last meeting, I believe you had raised a question regarding another aspect on that and adding another segment. So that is now being remanded to the policy committee for further review and discussion. I think that summarizes the bylaws, those two bylaws. I hope that helps.
Yeah, so we'll see. We'll see one fifty two at some point after the committee. And one sixty five seniority voting is is not going to float.
It's gonna, it's gonna, it's not illegal to deviate from Robert's rules with the recommendation. If you look at Robert's rules in the absence of of a rule, they say you do it in alphabetical order with the chair going last. So and that's what your policy had reflected, the Robert's rule. So based on the fact it was tabled, there didn't seem to be any interest to deviate from that that table unless the board says we'd like to reconsider it, then it goes back to policy committee and it can bring it forward. But I think right now the only one that's back is the bylaw one fifty two.
No, I just wanted to make sure one sixty five was gone because I I don't think we should ever vote in seniority order. So that answers my question. Thank you.
And Mark, I I think that what Bernie was trying to say is that that didn't come from a board member that he brought that to the policy committee. And I think he saw that there wasn't any interest in it. And particularly once did the due diligence and saw it was against. But I I, nobody indicated to me, myself included, that we should do anything but alphabetical. So absolutely in agreement with you.
I'm satisfied. Thank you.
And we'll see, we'll revisit the other policy once the policy committee has had a chance to look at language. Okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mark, following up. Okay, so I had a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion on items one through four versus a roll call vote? Seeing none, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to the community programs agenda, can I please have a motion to combine items one through three? Moved by Li Wu, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Abstain? Motion carries. Quick to him instruction, there is one item. Can I please have a motion for the East Brunswick Flex School enrollment?
So moved, Li Wu.
Moved by Li Wu. Second by Heather. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Abstain? Motion carries. Moving on to the facility agenda, can I please have a motion for items one and two? Anyone? Move by Susanna, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? I actually had a question more of Bernie, if you could please speak for a minute about this power purchase agreement and the impact it will have on us and what this is going to do.
So the board had previously approved a power purchase agreement which deals with the installation of solar panels at several of our facilities. That project has been moving forward for a number of months. We did have some questions and concerns with some of the installations on rooftops, which were resolved through a couple of meetings with the company. And those those issues have been addressed through the addendum to the power purchase agreement, and this resolution formalizes that addendum to the agreement that addresses the concerns that we had expressed to the company. So it puts us on track to be able to continue the solar project. In fact, we we had our first restart of the project meetings yesterday in anticipation of being able to move forward. So we will be seeing solar panels installations beginning on some of our facilities.
Great. Thank you very much for that explanation. I thought it would be of interest to the public. If there's Jeff?
Just real quick on top of that, and with that change, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yeah, now it's much better.
I'll just keep doing it. Mr. Ryan, with that change, that that had no impact on the cost of the program? I know, I don't see anything. Okay, that's good to know also. Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Bernie. So is this only impacted Warrens Dorfer and the Central Office Building?
No, it does not.
But this is, there is talk about including the good to the.
Right, so so let me let me just talk about that. It mentions those those two facilities for a reason. So first of all, the scope of the the scope of the solar project encompasses Churchill Junior High School, Lawrence Brook, Central. I believe that's it. Churchill, Lawrence Brook and Central. Now, from there, their original design on Churchill had to be modified because they were designing a system that was going to be installed on the standing seam roofs. We did not want the standing seam roofs to be impacted by any solar panels. So they wanted to make up the the amount of electricity generated by solar. So we had suggested that they might consider Warrens Dorfer, which has a brand new roof, so we don't have any issues that might be faced at that location. And we also suggested perhaps looking at the administration building if they would do a new roof for us. So so that part where you see Warrens Dorfer and the administration building addressed is to be able to have that ability. We're still looking at that. They're they're looking at the feasibility. And if it does proceed, particularly with the administration building, it will be with a new roof going on the administration building without cost to us. But it's going, it will be the roof that we want. It won't be something that we don't want.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Oh, the secretary.
Chu has her hand up.
Oh, Mrs. Chu.
I was just gonna make a comment that that's actually a nice side benefit to get a new roof out of it if that works out. So, you know.
We're going to try.
That would be a real nice side benefit.
Is.
Okay.
I see Mrs. pretty smiling widely there.
I believe this is a roll call vote?
Yes. Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to financial services, can I please have a motion for items one and two?
Don't move, Mark.
Mark, moved by Mark, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? No, I'm sorry. This is a roll call.
Mrs. Reese has her hand up. I believe she.
Sorry.
Thank you. I have a question, but maybe Bernie, you could explain to us number two a little more, the shared service agreement between East Brunswick and the New Brunswick Board of Ed regarding custodial services.
Certainly. New Brunswick has approached us for assistance. They are in need of supplementing their custodial services, their custodial staff. And they've asked if they could utilize our contract for custodial services. We have engaged with Aramark and validated that they would be able to provide the additional staffing required by New Brunswick. And so we've composed the costs associated with that based on what the Aramark costs would be, the monitoring costs. And it also has included a three percent fee that would in order to East Brunswick Public Schools. So that's basically a a service charge that New Brunswick would be paying to East Brunswick. And this does not impact our services whatsoever. It is one of the things that at the state level has been really promoted for a number of years, and that's to enter into shared services agreements where, you know, governing bodies can facilitate services with each other and for each other. So this really is right in line with what the state likes to see happen. So the most important aspect, in my view, is that it does not adversely impact our services. So and we're able to help out a neighboring school district.
Sounds like a good partnership. Thank you.
You're welcome. And we can do a roll call, Mrs. Becker. That's fine.
We can. I don't see, actually, it's not a roll call vote.
I I think I didn't note it on the agenda, but since we do have the shared services agreement, I would recommend that.
Sure, go for it.
Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes.
Mrs. Lax.
Yes.
Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to our. Moving on to our human resources agenda, can I please have a motion to combine items one and two?
So moved.
Moved by Li Wu?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lax?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to student services, can I please have a motion to combine items one and two?
Don't move, Mark.
Moved by Mark?
Second.
Second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Okay. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar?
Yes.
Mrs. Gwass?
Yes.
Mr. Hong?
Yes.
Mrs. Lax?
Yes.
Mrs. Reese?
Yes.
Mr. Winston?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, motion carries. And our final item on tonight's agenda is a transportation item. Can I please have a motion for quoted contract awards student transportation services?
So moved.
Moved by Li Wu?
Second.
Second by Mark. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Lou, confirming that our student rep is not with us tonight? Okay. Committee reports information items and good of the cause to the board. Anybody have anything? And Susannah?
I just want to mention that next week, on March 9th at 7:30 PM, Human Relations Council is putting on a Facebook Live event for the Lunar New Year. And again, they're partnering with various organizations. A lot of organizations from within the town as well as from our high school. So we have, we have something from, from our Mandarin class explaining, explaining, you know, the, the program and how you progress through the levels in, in the Mandarin classes. So there's an educational aspect of just learning about part of our program. And the High School Asian Club also contributed several pieces to provide some educational as well as, you know, interesting information for, for that event. So I hope, I hope you guys will be able to join.
Okay, anyone else? Jeff, then Mark?
I just want to point out, as I'm sure Mr. Figaro is anxiously awaiting tomorrow's big game with my favorite sports team in any Brunswick, the girls' basketball team are advancing in their pod, a watered-down version of this year's tournament. But if you haven't watched one of the games, they do stream them live. And boy, they are playing some basketball. So check them out. Tomorrow's their last game. Right, right, Lou? Am I right?
Got it.
What, what's the record, Jeff? What's your record for the season?
We turn up to talk about that. Every, every, it starts all over again at tournament time, okay? And tournament time says they're doing great.
They're doing great. That, I was just, I was just curious. But it's, it's great to give a shout out to our teams. Mark?
Yeah, it's March, Women's History Month. I think we should thank all the great women in our lives. And this is your month. So let's, I just, I just wanted to make mention of that. And thank you very much, all the great women in the district and in our personal lives. So thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone else? Okay, we do have a meeting for a closed session and a need for a closed session. The Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting. The Board of Education tends to discuss the following matters. Those that are listed in tonight's agenda. The length of the closed session is estimated to be one hour, after which the public meeting of the board shall reconvene, and action will not be taken. Can I please have a motion to go into closed session?
Don't move, Mark.
Moved by Mark, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Good members, please log out of this session and log into the closed session. To those of you who joined us tonight, thank you and be safe.